Good evening. I would like to call the January 28, 2019 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Present.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schwaller.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here.
Formal approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 14, 2019. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular city council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
No, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written.
Mayor's announcements. We have a couple things on the mayor's announcements this evening, and they're all good. And we have two oaths of offices this evening, and we will go ahead and get started with Jay Leach, who will now be our first lieutenant with the Belbrook Fire Department. So congratulations, Jay, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jay Leach,
I, Jay Leach.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
the state of Ohio
The state of Ohio.
and the Charter
And the Charter.
and the ordinances
And the ordinances.
of the city of Belbrook.
Of the city of Belbrook.
I further declare
I further declare.
that I will serve
That I will serve.
the citizens of Belbrook
The citizens of Belbrook.
by protecting life
By protecting life.
and property
And property.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
honestly
Honestly.
and impartially discharge
And partially discharge.
the duties of
The duties of.
fire lieutenant
Fire lieutenant.
for which I'm a, for which I am
For which I am.
about to enter. Congratulations. Thanks, sir. And, oh, great, thank you.
Yeah, well, good to hear. Good to hear.
And I think as tradition holds, I think we're going to have a hearing of the badge. Any pictures? There we go.
To get a hold of.
We have plenty of EMTs here in case you have a little slip. Thank you very much, Jay, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
And next, we have one more person. Full-time firefighter, Renee Sutton.
Nope. Nope. I don't know.
Or a firefighter.
Simmons. Oh, oops. Okay. I really don't know.
No, but we will need to redo this.
Yes.
I will go, and it's Renee Simmons.
Yes.
I apologize. Come on up. No, we're not going to let you down. It's not bad either, you know, we're just getting you on board. Congratulations very much. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Renee Simmons
I, Renee Simmons.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
the Constitution
The Constitution.
of the United States
Of the United States.
the state of Ohio
The state of Ohio.
and the Charter
And the Charter.
and the ordinances
And the ordinances.
of the city of Belbrook
Of the city of Belbrook.
I further declare
I further declare.
that I will serve
That I will serve.
the citizens of Belbrook
The citizens of Belbrook.
by protecting life
By protecting life.
and property
And property.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
honestly
Honestly.
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of firefighter
Of firefighter.
for which I'm about to enter
For which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
We'll update it and we'll redo that.
Well, thank you very much, and congratulations. And we're going to print it out.
We'll do that.
So moving on, it's nice to get a couple new firefighters join, or one new firefighter and a new lieutenant tonight, so that's great for the Fire Department. Moving on, we have a public hearing of ordinances. We actually have four ordinances, and we'll go ahead and start with the first ordinance, and since they're all related, probably just sort of discuss a big overview of each of those ordinances. So we'll start with ordinance number 2019-1, Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2019-1 and ordinance amending Article III, Section 3.02, definitions of the Belbrook zoning code. Whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas city council has determined it would be in the best interest of the city of Belbrook to amend Article III, Section 3.02 definitions of the Belbrook zoning code to allow for the inclusion of definitions related to establishments that produce alcohol-related products. And whereas the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on November 29, 2018, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following additions to Article III, Section 3.02 definitions of the Belbrook zoning code be approved. Article III, Section 3.02 definitions. Brew pub, brew pub, establishment primarily engaged in the retail sale of prepared food for consumption, which includes the brewing of beer as an accessory use. The brewing operation processes the ingredients to make beer and ale by mashing, cooking, and fermenting. The brewing operation does not include the production of any other alcoholic beverage. A, a brew pub shall not produce more than 4,000 barrels of beer or ale per year. B, no brewing equipment or storage is permitted on the exterior of the building. Microbrewery, microwinery, microdistillery, establishments engaged in onsite production of beer, wine, spiritus liquor, or other alcoholic beverages, and sales of the same by the glass for on-premises consumption. These establishments are primarily used for the production of beer, wine, spiritus liquor, or other alcoholic beverages, and may include retail and food service as an accessory use. The brewing operation processes the ingredients to make beer and ale by mashing, cooking, and fermenting. The brewing operation does not include the production of any other alcoholic beverage. The distilling operation is a small boutique-style distillery which produces relatively small quantities, usually done in small batches. A, a microbrewery shall not produce more than 15,000 barrels of beer or ale per year. B, no production equipment or storage is permitted on the exterior of the building. Taproom slash wine bar, an establishment that serves malt beverages and/or wine with a minimum of 50 percent of the gross floor area devoted to the retail sales of malt beverages, wine, and related products. Taprooms slash wine bars do not include the service or sale of distilled spirits. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Thank you very much. I think we're trying to get our technical portion of these ordinances up here. It looks like it's thinking.
It's starting to work. This was in a nick of time if I've ever seen that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have before council tonight four proposed zoning code changes, and these are the second time that these have come before council in the public hearing. Just to give everybody some background on kind of what we're doing here is, we've got, I had been approached from a father-and-son company, this was back in the summer. They were looking for a place to put a brew pub. They wanted to have a full restaurant operation and then a small brewery operation. I tried to help them identify an appropriate location, but because of the, you know, the large scale of the restaurant operation that they wanted, we weren't able to find something that was suitable at this point. So it got me thinking that, you know, there might be another company that may approach Belbrook because of our great location and community and the amount of traffic that we have that might want to do something similar in the future. So even though we do not have anybody that's looking right now, I thought that we would be proactive and make a few changes so that if we did have a company or an organization that wanted to come and put that type of establishment in Belbrook, we would be kind of ahead of the game there. So just to give council an overview of kind of the changes that have happened in the state of Ohio, in 2011, there was a change in legislation where it enabled, it enabled companies that were making, I think it was just craft beer at that point, if they were making it onsite, they could also sell it by the glass onsite. In 2013, they added a new permit category called an A1C permit. The way that liquor permits work is they're quota-based, based on your population. The A1 permits do not have any kind of a quota to them. So if a company is making the product onsite and selling it onsite, then it's a different set of regulations versus a typical alcohol-selling establishment that just buys it wholesale and then distributes it by the glass, or is a carryout or something like that. So the change in 2013 with the A1C permit also lowered fees. It used to cost upwards to $4,000 for a permit, and then it changed it to $1,000, which made it a little more feasible for people. So there was a boom in those types of businesses, and I'll get into some of those figures in the next slide, but why should this be considered by city council as it relates to Belbrook? There are a few points that I brought up. It's a booming industry, as you're going to see in the next slide. It's been a huge economic development tool for a number of communities to bring visitors in and such, and more visibility to their community, and thus supporting the other businesses that are in town. These craft alcohol establishments attract visitors. People are attracted to these places and will drive, you know, quite a ways just to try different things and to visit different establishments such as these. If you've ever been in an establishment like this, it's not like a typical bar. They're very much family-oriented. People go and have a glass or two, and they have a meal. If it's not a brew pub that has a restaurant onsite, most of them do serve food in some capacity with a food truck or something like that. So it's more of a fun environment, that you can kind of try some different things. So it's very different than a typical bar-type establishment that most are used to. And this is just an effort to just attract new businesses to our, a new business to our community. So the economic impact, at the end of 2018, there were 297 licensed, that's a typo there, craft breweries that were open in Ohio. Before the law changes, there were only 58 in Ohio. So as you can see, that number has drastically increased. And that was actually quoted from Columbus Business Journal. The craft beer industry's economic impact, the most recent figure I could find was at the end of 2016, and it was $2.675 billion, which is huge. And Ohio ranks number seven among all of the states in economic impact in terms of the craft brewing industry. So this was introduced, these recommendations were introduced to planning board once on October 11. They asked that a few changes be made. We took it back to them with those changes. They tweaked it a little bit further, some of the changes that they'd asked us to make. They kind of, they decided that maybe that wasn't such a great idea, like the square footage, how much square footage is devoted to restaurant space versus brewing space. They decided to kind of loosen up on that. They asked us to bring restrictions, and then they kind of moved those back. So it was kind of a give-and-take process there. So on November 29, the language with all of these changes were refined, and then they approved it for review by council. So we have four different ordinances tonight, and in the past, whenever there were any kind of zoning code changes, I believe that it would be brought in one ordinance. So just so council is aware, anytime you change a specific section of the code, it needs to be its own ordinance. So ordinances have to be single topic, and any section needs to be a standalone ordinance. So that's why we've got four tonight versus one taking care of a number of different things. So the first one, which Mrs. Mittelstetter just read, was definitions. There are also three more. There's one that has to do with permitted principal uses, one with conditional uses, and one with off-street parking regulations. So I'll give a little more detail on the four of those. So the first one with definitions, that one's very straightforward. The definitions were read. You've got brew pubs, which that is the majority of the operation as a restaurant, and then the brewing operation is an accessory use to that restaurant establishment. And then there are all the microestablishments, the microwineries, the microdistilleries, the microbreweries. Those are larger-scale production facilities, and what those do is, they're mostly a production facility, and then they've got the restaurant or the retail use is the accessory there. And then the taproom or wine bar, that's where 50 percent of the floor space would be used to sell a product. So you would have 50 percent of the floor space at least dedicated to having, you know, bottles of wine or whatever it is that's being produced, and then you would have the tasting room as well. So how does that differ from a traditional bar? A traditional bar doesn't have that type of retail floor space. It's, you know, mostly seating space, and then they sell the alcohol differently. So that's the difference there, that's the main difference. That cut off a little bit that I just noticed. So ordinance 2019-2 is permitted principal uses. So what this is saying is the permission of brew pubs and taprooms and wine bars would be a permitted principal use in our central business district. So this is a map which basically shows, it basically runs from dots to Dollar General is the west to the east map, and then it pretty much just follows along Franklin Street. It doesn't go as far south as it does north, but that's our central business district. So if somebody wanted to open a brew pub or a taproom or a wine bar, it's a smaller establishment again, and that would be a permitted use in our downtown central business district. So that is what 2019-2 would do. 2019-3 would be adding the microestablishments as a conditional use. The planning board thought that it would be important that anything that was going to be one of the larger producing establishments would have to come before them to make sure that they were able to consider how, you know, trucks with loading and unloading and traffic and things like that were going to affect the area in which this type of establishment would want to go. So they just wanted to make sure that the larger-type establishments should have some more consideration, and therefore would have to come before them as a conditional use. So that is adding those microestablishments as a conditional use in our central business district. The final ordinance is 2019-4. This has to do with off-street parking. So anything that would, any type of establishment that would go into a current structure that we have is grandfathered in to our regular parking establishments, but if somebody were to build something new, which were very limited in space, obviously, they would have to follow certain parking requirements. And in that ordinance, you'll see that the parking requirements are a little bit different. The restaurant, if there was a tasting room or restaurant space or anything like that, it would require a few more spaces versus the actual production facility, which wouldn't have as many people in it as what a restaurant's square footage would have in it. So there are two different requirements based on the square footage of the production facility, and then the more populated area that would be a restaurant or a taproom or something like that. So, but again, that would only be for new construction. And, yeah, so that's it. So they're all fairly straightforward, but this is just basically a tool to kind of be proactive, that if somebody wanted to open this type of establishment in Belbrook, we would already have these requirements considered, and that's basically what we were trying to do with this. So this is a really big economic development initiative that's been statewide, as you can see with the numbers, and I think it could be really great for bringing additional folks and traffic into Belbrook in a positive way. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Hey.
Do we get any input from the police chief on this? Is he on board with the process and what we're going to be doing?
Okay. Any other questions on council?
Thanks, Chief.
I know this has already went through the planning board and through that process. So we're starting with ordinance number 2019-1. That one has been introduced. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-1?
Thank you. I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I guess we need to do the public hearing part first. So before we do that, so that's ready to go. So this is a public hearing, so anyone on council have anything else to say? Anyone in the audience have anything to say? It's only once, it's only twice, this public hearing is closed, and then roll call.
All right. Motion was made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to approve ordinance 2019-1 and ordinance amending Article III, Section 3.02, definitions of the Belbrook zoning code, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Schwaller.
Yes.
Mayor Baird.
Yes. Moving on to ordinance number 2019-2, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2019-2 and ordinance amending Article 12, Section 12.02, permitted principal uses of the Belbrook zoning code. Whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas the city council has determined it would be in the best interest of the city of Belbrook to amend Article 12, Section 12.02, permitted principal uses of the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on November 29, 2018, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendment to Article 12, Section 12.02, permitted principal uses of the Belbrook zoning code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined. Number 1, any generally recognized retail business, service establishments, or processing uses as follows, T, brew pubs, taprooms, and wine bars. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Any questions? I know this is the second reading, and I know we've talked about it. If not, may I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-2?
Do we have to do public hearing?
Oh, yeah, thank you. All these in a row. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in council have anything to say? Does anyone in our audience have anything to say? Seeing nothing, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-2?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-2.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to approve ordinance 2019-2 and ordinance amending Article 12, Section 12.02, permitted principal uses of the Belbrook zoning code, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schwaller.
Yes.
Mr. Baird.
Yes. Moving on, ordinance number 2019-3. Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook, ordinance number 2019-3 and ordinance amending Section 12, Article 12, Section 12.10, conditional uses of the Belbrook zoning code. Whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas city council has determined it would be in the best interest of the city of Belbrook to amend Article 12, Section 12.10, conditional uses of the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on November 29, 2018, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved an amendment and recommendation adopted by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendment to Article 12, Section 12.10, conditional uses of the Belbrook zoning code be approved with additions shown by italics and underline. Ren, number 1, microbreweries, microwineries, microdistilleries. This ordinance, Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Any discussion on council? Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in our audience today? I see no one. I call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-3?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-3.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mike. And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. McGill to approve ordinance 2019-3 and ordinance amending Article 12, Section 12.10, conditional uses of the Belbrook zoning code, seconded by Mr. Schwaller. Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Schwaller.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Baird.
Yes. Moving on, we have one more public hearing of ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2019-4. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2019-4 and ordinance amending Article 18, Section 18.16, off-street parking regulations of the Belbrook zoning code. Whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas city council has determined it would be in the best interest of the city of Belbrook to amend Article 18, Section 18.16, off-street parking regulations of the Belbrook zoning code, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the amendment to the zoning code on November 29, 2018, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendment and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following amendment to Article 18, Section 18.16, off-street parking regulations of the Belbrook zoning code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined and deletions shown by strike-through and brackets. 18.16, off-street parking regulations. Amount of off-street parking space required. Restaurant taverns, taprooms, and wine bars. One parking space for each 100 square feet of gross floor area. Brew pub, microbreweries, microwineries, microdistilleries. One parking space for each 100 square feet of gross parking area for restaurant and/or retail service, and one parking space for each 300 square feet of gross floor area for production. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Once again, this is a public hearing. Any comments or questions on city council? Seeing none, I open it up to our audience this evening. Seeing none, I will call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-4?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-4.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. Greenwood to approve ordinance 2019-4 and ordinance amending Article 18, Section 18.16, off-street parking regulations of the Belbrook zoning code, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. McGill.
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Schwaller.
Yes.
Mr. Baird.
Yes. That is it for public hearings of ordinances. We have an introduction of ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2019-5. Mr. Edwards.
I think I probably ought to read this one. I still might be conflicted.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, for the small cells.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2019-5 and ordinance adding Chapter 18, 10, small cell facilities and wireless structures to the codified ordinances of Belbrook, Ohio. Whereas House Bill 478 of the 132nd General Assembly, House Bill 478, has enacted and became effective on August 1, 2018, and whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to establish general procedures and standards for wireless facilities and structures in order to comply with House Bill 478, and whereas the city council seeks to comply with House Bill 478 and codify general procedures and standards for use for siting, construction, placement, and colocation of modification, operation, and removal of small cell facilities and/or wireless and removal of small cell facilities and/or wireless support structures within the city of Bellbrook. And now, therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby ordains, Section 1, a new Chapter 18 entitled Small Cell Facilities and Wireless Structures, the codified ordinance of the city of Bellbrook, Ohio, be enacted to read as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached hereto. Section 2, that the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Any questions on council? I guess we maybe give a little description. I'm pretty aware of what's going on here.
So, we're a little late in the game, but we didn't have anybody that was trying to put an active application in with the city or anything, and this actual legislation had kind of went back and forth quite a bit, and it's finally quieted down, and we feel confident that everything that has been revised and changed with the legislation has been updated and is contained in our regulations, is being legal and everything. We had our law director take a look at it, and she saw no issues. The attachment that we have here to this ordinance is something that just, it's almost exactly the same in almost every municipality. It's been vetted by the Ohio Municipal League, and a number of people have taken a look at this exact legislation to make sure that it passes all of the tests with the changes of the legislation. So, just so everybody knows what the small cell facilities do, this is to create the 5G network, and a lot of the wireless companies, you know, they have the large towers. So, the large towers are able to cover a larger area with a weaker signal. So, what these will do is, any company that wants to attach to like, a shorter pole, like a streetlight or something like that, it casts a much stronger signal on a much smaller area. So, there were just a lot of considerations that had to be addressed in the legislation, and I feel pretty confident that what we have is really solid, and that we should be prepared should we get any applications from any companies, so.
Any questions on council?
I read through it, and I was kind of going, "Ohhhhh."
Yeah.
By the time I was done, there was concern when we first approached this topic a year or so ago, about them just being able to come in and put one wherever they decided they wanted to put one. Sort of eminent domain type of procedure. That seems to not be the case with this, so.
Well, long story short, the cities, our associations, we all fought this, most of them. And I know we were supportive, and we all contributed, I think, money to this to fight this at the state level. There were court cases over this, declaring that it was an infringement on a city's home rule. So, after long and exhaustive battles, they finally came to a somewhat agreement, and the state legislation is passed. So, this is really, we're not doing, they were telling us we had to, and originally, we had no control over it. So, the cities got together to fight, to say, "We gotta have some control over it. You know, we don't want these things everywhere, and have no ability to have any control."
Right.
And that's why this whole process has come through. It's probably not perfect, but at this point, it's state law. So, you know, Donna, because she works for electric utilities, their poles, and so they had a dog in the fight, too.
Sure.
So, that's why she accused herself. So, this is just putting it on the books. We're gonna have someone come in sometime, and we have to have the legislation to be able to deal with it, based upon the Ohio revise code.
So, does this domain, let it say, come down the street and decide that your front yard is where they want to put one?
Well, this would be public right of way. They can't do anything in your yard without...
But there is public right of way that comes into the...
Yes.
...front yard.
Well, correct, and it's technically depending on what you're owned to. It is a public right of way, which, under Ohio revise code, are for utilities.
And there are different standards that, you know, if there is already an existing pole, that's where it needs to go, first consideration. So, it's like first consideration, second consideration, third consideration, on down the line. So, they should put it on an existing structure, absolutely.
And residential, most of the poles are in the backyards between the two, not in the front yards.
And there are also design standards that are included in this that says that it needs to match the pole. It needs to not have an enclosure that's more than a certain area. So, all of those things are addressed, and I'm sure that this will probably continue to be tweaked in the years to come as the technology changes.
Design standards for matching a pole are kind of...
Yeah. And this is the introduction of ordinance tonight, so we'll be talking about it. Again, it's the public hearing portion of it. But, as I said, it's one of those things the cities have a tough to swallow, to lose control in a home rule city, which we are.
Well, that's pretty much what I...
Any other questions on council?
Thank you.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 2019-5?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 2019-5.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance 2019-5, an ordinance adding Chapter 810, small cell facilities and wireless structures to the codified ordinances of Bellbrook, Ohio, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, resolutions. We have three.
Yeah.
Yes, go get Donna.
Actually, we have four. I tapped on one at the last minute on Friday.
Oh, gotcha.
We can't move on without me.
No. Moving on, resolutions this evening. We have four of them this evening. We'll start with Resolution 2019-C, and we're gonna put you right to work.
Yeah.
Donna Seager-Lawson.
All right. Let me find it. Okay. Resolution number 2019-C, a resolution establishing credit card policies and procedures for the city of Bellbrook pursuant to House Bill 312, in compliance with the Ohio revise code, Section 717 dot 13A. Whereas the Ohio State Legislature has recently enacted House Bill 312 regulating the use of credit cards and debit cards by political subdivisions, and whereas House Bill 312 further requires the legislative authority of a political subdivision that holds a credit card account to adopt a written policy, which must comply with the various requirements of Ohio revise code, Section 717 dot 13, for the use of credit card accounts. And whereas House Bill 312 required political subdivisions to adopt a new credit card policy in compliance with these requirements, not later than three months after House Bill 312's effective date of November 2nd, 2018. And whereas this council wishes to establish the city's policy pertaining to the use of city credit cards to comply with the current law. Now, therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the city of Bellbrook's credit card policy is hereby enacted as set forth in substantially the same form as attached hereto as Exhibit A, and Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. Did we change our policy, or we just didn't have one?
We didn't have one. So, this would actually, it would become part of our personnel policy manual, our administrative policies. So, there's a number of different policies that are contained in the administrative policies, and that's where this would actually go. So, the legislation that was passed by the House Bill 312, it outlined that every municipality had to adopt this by February, let's see, February 2nd, and it outlined certain things that each policy had to address. So, you could, you know, you could be even more detailed, but at minimum, you had to have certain things, like which employees are allowed to use credit cards, what types of expenses could be used, what are your limits. It also said if somebody was going to hold the credit cards at all time, that was gonna be one thing. If not, you have to name a compliance officer that's not a cardholder to have some oversight over it. What you do, procedures for submitting receipts. So, pretty much everything that you see, we did add a couple of additional things in here, but we do cover all of the minimums that are required by the House bill. And we're putting it in enough time to get it passed by February 2nd.
So, a state passed something, so we have to be in compliance with that state. So, which isn't all bad.
I was gonna say, it's good that they have it written down.
It just depends how arduous they make it on smaller cities versus larger cities. So, yes, so it's something we have to do. Any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-C?
May I adopt Resolution number 2019?
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
A motion was made by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Resolution 2019-C, a resolution establishing credit card policies and procedures for the city of Bellbrook pursuant to House Bill 312, in compliance with Ohio revise code, Section 717 point 13, parentheses A, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2019-D, Mr. Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2019-D, a resolution authorizing Robert L. Baird, mayor of the city of Bellbrook, to enter into an amended employment agreement with Melissa J. Dodd, city manager slash finance director. Whereas the council of the city of Bellbrook and Melissa J. Dodd desire to amend their written employment agreement, and whereas it is required that the council of the city of Bellbrook pursuant to Article 6, Section 6.01 of the Bellbrook Charter, shall appoint a city manager by a majority vote of its members and fix his or her compensation. Now, therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, Robert L. Baird as mayor of the city of Bellbrook is hereby authorized to execute an amended employment agreement attached hereto with Melissa J. Dodd on behalf of the city of Bellbrook. Section 2, that Melissa J. Dodd be afforded a cost of living increase in the amount of 2 and 3/4 percent. Section 3, that Melissa J. Dodd is granted a bonus in the amount of 6 percent of her annual salary, as permitted in the amended employment agreement. In Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. This is the result of our review of the city manager's performance in our January 14th meeting. We've been very satisfied with the performance of Melissa, and we gave her a 2.75 percent increase, which is consistent with our city employees. We also awarded her a bonus in the amount of 6 percent, which equates to $6,000.
We probably have the lowest-paid city manager of all the cities in Green County.
City manager and city finance director.
And finance director.
That's correct.
I don't know if it's something to be proud of or not.
And last year, she was also clerk of council.
Yeah, and she was clerk of council for a while. Any questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-D?
May I move for the adoption of Resolution 2019-D?
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
A motion is made by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2019-D, a resolution authorizing Robert L. Baird, mayor of the city of Bellbrook, to enter into an amended employment agreement with Melissa J. Dodd, city manager, finance director. This was seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2019-E, Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2019-E, a resolution directing the Green County auditor to enter the delinquent cost of unpaid water bills on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereunto. Whereas the city of Bellbrook, following all applicable procedures contained in the Bellbrook municipal code, invoice customers for providing water to properties located in the city of Bellbrook's water system area, and whereas Bellbrook municipal code, Section 1042.05, authorizes unpaid water bills to be certified to the Green County auditor to be entered upon the tax duplicate, and whereas the collection of such delinquent costs are in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the costs that have been incurred for providing water that have not been paid by the property owners is $302.96. That the -- Section 2, that the costs incurred shall be entered on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereunto. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
So, this is annual legislation to assess any unpaid water bills. $302.96 is very minimal, so that's a good thing. So, it was just for properties, and those will be submitted to the auditor for collection with property taxes.
And typically, they won't probably be paid until a house is sold. This is generally the plan, so. Any questions on council?
No.
I know it's annual, and actually, I was surprised it was so small.
I'm glad we did that, because I think when we first started doing that, they were much bigger.
Yeah, this is the least I've ever seen, so. Any other questions on council? If not, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-E?
May I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2019-E?
I'll second.
And roll call. I already said that, didn't I?
No. A motion is made by Mr. Greenwood to adopt Resolution 2019-E, a resolution directing the Green County auditor to enter the delinquent cost of unpaid water bills on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereto, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, ordinance, Resolution number 2019-F, Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2019-F, a resolution directing the Green County auditor to enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereto. Whereas the city of Bellbrook, following all applicable procedures contained in the Bellbrook municipal code, caused overgrown grass and weeds to be cut on properties located in the city of Bellbrook, and whereas Bellbrook municipal code, Section 678.03B, authorizes the delinquent cost of such action to be certified to the Green County auditor to be entered upon the tax duplicate, and whereas the collection of such delinquent costs are in the best interest of the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, the city of Bellbrook hereby resolves, Section 1, that the costs that have been incurred for the mowing of grass and weeds that have not been paid by the property owners is $481.25. Section 2, that the costs incurred shall be entered on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereto. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Discussion? Once again, of course, it's winter time.
Typically, this comes before council in August, and it just got missed, so we're bringing it before council now with the water bills.
Once again, there's not much there.
Yeah, they're only two properties.
Yeah.
As far as the grass is more than the water.
Yeah.
It's just the time that it takes the staff to do it.
Yeah.
Discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-F?
I move we adopt Resolution number 2019-F.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion is made by Mrs. Mittelstetter to adopt Resolution 2019-F, a resolution directing the Green County auditor to enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate for the properties attached hereto, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city managers' report.
So, I have quite a few things. I'll try to blow through this quickly, so in the essence of time. On last Thursday, the 24th, there was a community leaders' meeting. A majority of council members were in attendance. It was a joint meeting that we're gonna try to do twice a year, and it's with the school board, and the Parks District, and the township, and the city. So, a few of the board members, trustees, council members, and community leaders just kind of come together, and everybody just kind of gives an update of notable things that are happening within each of those organizations, and it's a really good meeting. So, I think that our next one is gonna be in September, so it's gonna be a little bit more of a gap between this one and the last one. During that meeting, though, something that the schools have initiated is a lunch with leaders. So, as council members and mayor, I've got four passes, so you are invited to go and have lunch at the school, provided by the school. So, I've got some information here. You can contact Jennifer Han with the schools, and she will coordinate some dates and...
and, uh, let you know about times and things like that. So if it's something that you're interested in doing, I've got four badges. You just have to make sure that you wear that when you go into the school to, to have lunch, and lunches on them, and you can sit and talk to students. So it's a pretty neat program that they're implementing. So just let me know if you're interested in doing that. Um, I have...
What school is that? Is it the high school?
It's at all, any of the schools. Yep, you can go to any of the schools.
Any school.
Um, I want to introduce, uh, Michaela Grant. She's our intern, so she's here with us tonight. And she started with us, um, two or three weeks ago now at this point, and she's been doing an amazing job. Um, she's, she's been helping me with a lot of, uh, really, really neat projects. Um, she, uh, one of the cool things that she's done a lot of work on, she did a lot of work on, um, the farmer's market application and regulations for 2019 and helping to push that information out. Um, so those applications are available for, uh, the 2019 season. We're gonna be doing that the second Saturday of every month here in our parking lot. So this time, we would like to add, um, a live music vendor, kind of not, nothing amplified, but like an acoustic music type, uh, type, uh, musician to add to that, and then, uh, one food truck that actually has hot, prepared food as well. So if you or somebody that you know are interested, please contact me. Um, we're looking for people to fill up those dates. Um, one of the big, uh, projects that we worked on, Michaela and I, uh, Michaela did a lot of, uh, work on this, is our Downtown Beautification Fund has launched, which is really cool. So there's actually, um, you'll see that it's on the banner of the homepage, um, but there's also an Explore Downtown and a Downtown Beautification page. And on this page, um, it talks about the fund. So the fund that has been established, um, is in partnership with Green Giving, which is the Green County Community Foundation, and they're a 501(c)(3) organization. Um, you can actually click on the Belbrook Downtown Beautification to donate. It takes you to a Green Giving, um, a Green Giving website, which kind of mirrors our, our website as well. And, um, we had a Village Review Board meeting where I gave a couple of different options for custom bike racks and benches to be installed downtown. Um, these are the pictures of both. The bike rack is really cool. Um, so it's got the Belbrook logo. It's got the outline of the State of Ohio with a heart over where, uh, Belbrook is. Um, so the, uh, bike racks can be sponsored for $500, and the benches are six-foot benches, and they can be sponsored for $1,000. I launched this on Tuesday of last week, and we had our very first donor on Tuesday. So I'm really excited about this. So I hope to place the first order by the end of February so that we can get the first wave of these in to be installed downtown along Franklin, um, by the Sugar Maple Festival, I'm hoping. So we'll have a few right here at the main intersection. Um, so I'm really excited about that. So a big thank you to Dots Market for buying the first bench and bike rack. I'm really excited about that. So, uh, Michaela actually designed a brochure. Um, we're gonna print this on some heavier paper, um, but it talks about the bike and the ba, the bike rack and the bench, and it gives some information about donating. So I'll pass that around, but we have all the information on the website as well. We sent that out, um, to, uh, Michaela worked on a letter, and, uh, we sent the brochure and the letter out asking for sponsorship from 100 different Belbrook businesses. So we're hoping, um, that those start to, uh, start to come in. So I'm really excited about this. So we're hoping to purchase five bike racks and five benches at first, and, um, once, once we get those purchased, then, um, we might look at, uh, maybe purchasing a few more. Where are those gonna go? We wanna make sure that they're in really, uh, visible, thoughtful locations if somebody is gonna be purchasing those. So, um, this could go to purchase, you know, some additional, uh, beautification items, like maybe some, some more flower arrangement-type things, maybe some hanging baskets from poles, things like that, um, different things. So we're gonna, we've got an actual, uh, Beautification Fund Committee, Downtown Beautification Fund Committee. So those folks will be working, uh, working with me to identify projects. So I'm really excited about that.
And you don't have to be a business, right?
No, you can, yeah. Yep, you can be in...
I just thought for people that are watching.
Yep, you can be an individual. And you also, if you wanna just donate $20 just towards the calls, you can definitely do that, too. There's, um, there's no limit, but if you wanted to purchase a full item, you would get a plaque with your business name or your family name that is actually on the bike rack or the bench, um, that indicate your sponsorship. But you can definitely give any do, any dollar amount to go towards the efforts, and that's definitely appreciated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Franklin Street Bridge Project. So, uh, the Franklin Street Bridge that's down near Dots, um, that for some time has had some issues with pedestrian safety. Um, I am attending an MBRPC meeting tomorrow. Um, we were one of the four projects that has been, um, green-lighted for funding. Um, this meeting will give the final, um, scoring of those projects. Um, I don't look for there to be any issues with our scoring because we were within two points of MBRPC scoring. So, um, I'm just gonna go and listen in, but the, the final, uh, approval will come on March 7th. So it looks really good for now. So, um, again, that funding wouldn't come for five years unless we were able to get the project pushed forward. But once we get, um, the MBRPC funding secured, then that would give me the ability to go out. Um, and, uh, OPWC has a funding mechanism that this would be an ideal project for, so I'm hoping that our $200,000 local match could be picked up by OPWC funding, which would result in, uh, zero local dollars being spent on the project and it being completely funded by grant dollars, I hope. So I will aggressively work on that. The Little Sugar Creek Road Plan that council has asked me to work on, um, Service Director and I met with, um, an engineer from LJB on Friday to start to form an action plan. He gathered a lot of information from Ryan since he has, you know, a wealth of historical knowledge based on, you know, what's been done, um, with the road, what's happened with the road, um, the concerns that we have. Um, so the, the engineer took a lot of information in. He went up and, uh, you know, drove and actually looked at the road himself, and so he's gonna follow back up with us on what he thinks and kind of an action plan moving forward. So we have started to have those discussions to try to figure out what a good solution to that would be. I did stress to him, though, that whatever we do with that road, I wanna make sure that pedestrian access is considered in that as well. Because it is a, a big concern. Whenever you go down that road, you see pedestrians walking down the side of it, constantly coming from those developments, trying to get downtown. So, uh, that is in the process. Um, Planning and Zoning Assistant Position, first consideration, will close at the end of today. We have a lot of really, really good applicants. Um, I'm hoping to hold interviews the week of February 4th for that position. So I'll keep coun, council updated on that. Um, and one, one last thing that I think is worth mentioning just because it was asked of me directly at the community leaders' meeting. Um, somebody was asking, you know, what was going on with the San Sucee property? And, um, I know that I have, uh, staff have met, actually, there's been several of us that have met with Stephen Kircher, who, um, is one of the sons, um, that's in, and, and owner of the property now that, um, the estate is kind of being, uh, transferred to, to the sons, the three sons that, um, that are associated with that property. And, um, Stephen Kircher is really interested in possibly, uh, pursuing, uh, a snow, a snow tubing hill on the property. So, um, he really loves the property and would really like to see it stay as is. Um, he does, he, he skis out there, and he does his own tubing, and, um, he's really into the outdoors, and he thinks that that would be something that would be really fun. So we're kind of in the early, uh, discussions of trying to figure out how that might work. So I think that that would be a really neat asset to the community if we can, if we can make it happen. And, you know, obviously, this, this would take, um, consideration by planning board and approval by council, things like that. So, um, we're just kind of thinking about all the different moving parts that might be, um, involved in trying to make something like that happen. But, um, he actually built a website that's called belbrookmountain.com, so you can take a look at it. Um, it's just something that he did for fun, and, um, I, I think that it, it could be a really neat thing if, if, uh, we could, we could see that happen. Um, definitely much better than anything else that could happen with that property as an alternative. So I think a snow tubing hill would be really fun. So that's all that I have for now.
Any questions on council for our city manager?
Maybe just one on the Little Sugar Creek Road plot project. As we go forward with the engineering, I think it's pretty important to let them know at some point in time, we'd probably prefer a staged approach. Or by, we'd bite off a little piece at a time. I'm sure if that makes sense, we're not with them, but for us to do the entire project is probably gonna be something that we couldn't afford initially. So, other than that.
Yeah, depending on Ohio Public Works and all the other stuff. I guess in, in theory, we had a, a huge grant from Ohio Public Works or something, but... Absolutely.
And we have, need to keep in mind that we will eventually, once, um, Hy-Vee Terrace is finished, we'll have that walkway on the east side of the...
Just gotta figure out how to cross the creek.
Yeah, you have to cross the creek is the...
Creek's problem.
It's the big problem.
So, but there's always...
You know, we need, we need a turf company to maybe donate some big rocks.
Big rocks, I don't know.
Big stepping stone rocks.
Until they wash away.
Yeah.
Um, but that is, you know, I am curious. See when we will be able to start thinking about the, the path. That might be something to touch base. I don't know. Or did, no, they probably gotta get a few more houses built for the dedication, I would imagine.
Mm-hmm.
So, because our backside's not been built yet, and so until that gets built, they can't dedicate the land, so.
Yeah.
Uh, no other questions, and moving on. Uh, committee report, service.
Um, just wanna say thank you again to the Service Department for clearing our streets. Uh, we've had several, um, snow emergencies, I've told them. Uh, and our streets are always way better than everyone else's. Um, so I think they're doing a great job. I know it's really difficult, especially when we get the snow right in the morning, right when all those, you know, schools are trying to be in session and people are trying to go to work. So they've done a great job.
I don't know, the kids probably aren't happy all the storms are on the weekend.
All the storms are on the weekend. Yeah, that's all I hear. Well, it's not snow this Saturday.
That's not fair.
That's all I got.
That, safety?
Uh, the only thing I'd like to remind people is midweek, we're supposed to have some extremely cold weather. Um, just take precautions, you know. Your furnace is gonna be working overtime, and fire detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, make sure they're in working order. If you do use any supplemental heat, please be careful. And, uh, make sure you dress for the occasions. Uh, supposed to be some extreme wind chills associated with that weather. And if you have any pets, uh, make sure they're taken care of, too. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Forrest. Finance and Audit?
Mayor, before us in our packets, we have the fourth quarter financial update, and everyone, I think, has a, had a chance to look at it. Uh, we talked about our cash balance at the end of $5,445,528. Uh, revenues continue to track pretty much on budget. They're up very substantially over 2017 with the 1.3 Ohio Public Works for the Water Main project that came in. Additional items of interest, our EMS receipts continue to drop down a little bit, which I'm a little surprised on that. And, uh, we continue to see a surge primarily from Waterford on the, uh, the water tap-in fees. Expenses, again, are relatively close, in line with what we had in the budget. Uh, we're actually a little bit under, so that's kind of a fair approach to it. But again, the biggest expense is the, the Water Main project on, uh, Upper Hill Rise. And then follows after that the capital, which the biggest piece is the Upper Hill Rise, uh, Water Main. The rest of our capital, if you look at the individual line items, it's kind of uncanny how close we came to, to budget, and several of them are actually under budget. So unless there are any questions, I would motion that we would accept the fourth quarter financial update as presented.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, Community Affairs.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. We've got a lot tonight. Um, the Community Affairs Committee, we interviewed, uh, three applicants for the vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals and Property Review Commission, and excellent candidates. Um, but we chose to recommend Aaron Burke for appointment to this, um, vacancy. And he would, uh, be on the, as, as an appointee and then would be appointed to run his, and to fulfill a full term then, once he's, I think this term that he's fulfilling is, or, uh, vacancy expires at the end of this year. Or January 31st, 2019, is that correct?
No, this...
Or 2020?
No, 2019.
It already expires.
They'll start...
Oh, it's, yeah, that's, it's just in a few days.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a few weeks, yeah. Thursday. So it's an expiration, so this is the full term.
Yes.
I'll get it straight.
Okay.
So I, we, the committee recommends, that's our motion, that we appoint Aaron Burke as the, uh, new...
Okay.
New person on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So that's in a motion?
And I'll second.